On the eighteenth week, we call the Frank County Commissioner meeting to order, please.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
President.
Chair Harris.
President.
Vice Chair Metter.
President.
Commissioner Dickenson.
Stand for President.
A select reading from Psalm seven and a prayer. My shield is with God who saves the upright in heart. I will give to the Lord the thanks to his righteousness. I will sing praise to the name of the Lord, the Most High. Oh, Lord, we come to you this morning thankful, thankful for each of your gifts, but more than anything because of who you are, the Most High, and we praise you this morning. I ask for wisdom for each of our county commissioners, and this morning I want to ask a special blessing for each county staff member. Oh, Lord, would you give your favor in each of our staff members across the county, praying a blessing in their lives for their needs, both personally and in their work? So, we ask for this in the name of your holy son, Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Okay. Thank you. Correspondents, public comment. Consider the ten, considering the approval of claimed vouchers of eight hundred forty-eight thousand twenty-seven dollars fifty-eight cents, and then consider the approval of the minutes for June fourth, regular meeting, June ninth and tenth, Budzoo meetings. That's it.
Motion to approve, Consignor.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes. First item of business is appointing the person to the Ransom Memorial Hospital Board Justices.
Yep, as the four of you are aware, it is your responsibility to appoint folks to this board. We have one spot, and we have three candidates for that spot. I will defer to what you all would like to see, but I believe they are here and certainly would welcome them to come up and say a few words if the four of you would like to see that, so.
Anybody want to come up and say a few words?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Chair Harris, and Commissioners, for allowing me just a few moments to speak. As you know, I'm the incumbent, so to speak, in this board position, and you've all seen my application, and I'm sure you've had the opportunity to read it, and three of you have had me before you in the past, so I don't need to go on and on about my qualifications. I do want to say I've lived here in this community since 1988, and I have only worked in this community, both at People's Bank, the former People's Bank, and at Ottawa University, and I've been involved in a lot of community boards and organizations because I feel very invested in Franklin County, in this community. And that's really the reason why I want to be a member of the, continue being a member of the Ransom Memorial Hospital Board, because I think a strong hospital is really critically important to this community, to the citizens who are here, and to attracting new citizens and new investment in the community. So, I would like to continue that role. The duty of the members of the Ransom Memorial Hospital Board is to approve the allocation of the sales tax. That is, that is the focus, that is the duty of the members of this board, and while the administration does an excellent job at the hospital of sharing what is happening at the hospital and the community needs, it is our duty to approve that allocation, and I feel like we've done a good job over the years investing in the community, such as the Ninth and Main Project, the Wellsville Project, and trying to be getting very close to standing up labor and delivery again, and I've enjoyed being a part of that. But I also feel like that board, because it's an open meeting and a public board, and you all appoint us, should be a sounding board, both for the administration of the hospital and for members of the community who have questions and concerns. And I'm very willing to talk with people, I have talked with people individually, and as the chair of this board, to let people bring their concerns before the board and would continue doing so. So, in conclusion, I feel like I have gained a lot of expertise and history with this board. I feel that's important with a new CEO onboard, and I hope to be reappointed. Thank you.
Lord.
I think she's a very qualified individual. My only concern is that in the United States today, healthcare is about going through a major transformation, and I'm not sure that we're prepared for the transformation that's coming. There are huge economic dynamics that are working through the system right now. The only thing that I bring to the table is transformation. I've gone through European transformation, I've gone through base realignments and closures in the United States, and Conus over a ten-year period, excellent in transformation. But by the same token, I do respect this young lady here, and I just tell you, that's what I bring to the table. I think you all see my resume, have background in a lot of different areas, but that's my only concern, that's the only reason I bring myself forward, is I think we're in for a big change. Anyway.
Thank you.
Hello. Well, we do have some challenges coming forward. However, I would like to rescind my application. Thank you for reading it, and appreciate.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any discussion?
I'd just say, I mean, ultimately, I do hope that the hospital board, I guess I've said before, pays attention to having a diverse set of, I guess, perspectives and backgrounds, and, you know, not be afraid to have some turnover, but that being said, I do also think the world of Janet, and I don't think the board would be better without Janet. So, I would, in this instance, be in favor of, agree that'd be the best course to keep Janet, agree with the letter we received from Dr. Frank and the support we've gotten from other folks to go in that direction, but like I say, ultimately, I hope, hope the board is open-minded to, you know, incorporate some other perspectives ultimately, and making sure everybody feels represented and listened to eventually, but like I say, in this instance, I think we'd be better off, the board would not be better without Janet, so.
Oh, you're second.
I don't have a motion yet.
Okay.
I'd be, want to make a motion to appoint Janet Peters to the RMH.
Okay. Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Thanks. Yes. Thanks for staying interested.
Yeah, thank you.
And I would say, keep going, like, do it again if it comes up again.
You're both very intelligent people, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody's gonna leave happy today, that's just not a.
Unheard of. Consider approval of the annual D O O security license renewal of Dustin.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is, as it stated, an annual renewal. We got into this product last year to handle our multi-factor authentication, it's providing that additional layer of security to our logins, specifically our VPN connections. We're getting ready to roll it out for some more services. This would be similar to what you're used to, if you're using banking apps on your phone, where else sends you a challenge, one-time pass code, anything like that, that's what this product does for us. So, if we have accounts that has credentials that get compromised, this provides an additional layer before allowing somebody to get into our systems. The pricing on this stayed flat, it was budgeted for in our software services line. Stand for any questions that you may have about it.
In Wayman's terms, this is a additional cybersecurity.
This is, if I had to really reduce everything down to the number-one current recommendation for what every organization have to get the biggest bang for their dollar, it would be multi-factor authentication, and this is the product that we chose to implement that. It is a very common, I haven't looked at the stats to tell you whether it's the top-ranked, second-ranked, but it is very much a leading vendor in this arena.
The best one for us, huh?
Yes. I'll say, we implemented it last year, and it's, well, it's catching the things that we thought most going on, and we can see a little bit more about what's going on in our, in our edge network.
Makes us better. I'd make a motion to approve the quote for the annual support for dual security in the amount of fourteen thousand forty-five dollars.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item three, consider approval, a cost of living adjustment, call, maybe.
Yep, good morning. This was budgeted for the 2025 budget at 1.6%, so just looking for approval to move forward with that to be effective June 21st. I did talk with Janet to make sure that revenue was where it needed to be, they're working on distributions to make sure that we're, we're set there, that should be done by the end of the week.
Yep.
Assuming that everything still looks good, we'd like to move forward with it and go ahead and get your approval, so.
I'll make a motion unless anybody has questions. All right, I'll make the motion to approve the 1.6 cost of living adjustment for county employees, effective the pay period beginning June 21st, 2025.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discuss and review Franklin County EMS first quarter ambulance. Christie.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, the first thing that I have to go over is just the deposits that we made. We were able to bounce back in the March of March, where we actually exceeded the revenue that we needed to make budget, so that was the first time we had done so this year. I did have a little bit of a setback with losing our billing clerk in January and February, but now we're, we've been able to overcome that, so we were able to bring in one hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents in the first three months of the quarter. It did leave us a little bit short, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents from where we needed to be with revenue. However, we did see an overage in April as well. May wasn't as good, but it looks like we're bouncing back again in June, so hopefully, once everything gets in place that we need to be, we'll see those numbers go up even more. The other thing was our adjustments, and again, these are our contractual write-offs that we have to have with our insurance companies. That was in the amount of seventy-two thousand, eight hundred three dollars and forty-four cents, and then for our collections report, we did submit two thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents to the set-off program for collections.
Is that usually successful?
It takes some time, but yes, we do get quite a bit of revenue from it. You know, we're looking in the five digits, five, six digits every single year, so it is, it's easy to do, and it puts it out there, and we do, we do get revenue from it, so.
The state set off, so that'd be any kind of refund or revenue that you'd get from the state?
It's either income tax refunds, or if somebody wins money at a casino or something, then we would get the funds from that.
That works out for me.
So, moving on to the first quarter commission reports, looking at the days of the week, again, I've said many a time that there's really no rhyme or reason to it, and again, in 2024, our busiest day of the week was, was Monday, and in 2025, it was Tuesday. Our runs by hour of the day, while they do run a pretty consistent pattern, we did have our peak call time in 2024 at 10 o'clock in the morning, and in 2025, that shifted to 3 o'clock in the afternoon. As far as runs by county, as you can see, we absolutely, still, the majority of the calls are in Franklin County. We were able to do some mutual aids with Anderson County, Miami County, and Osage County during this time as well. Moving on, if we look by our runs by zone, our call volume's down just ever so slightly for 2025 as compared to 2024, so as such, you're gonna see that most of our numbers reflecting are down a little bit. However, Franklin District and Ottawa North, those areas both increased in call volume, and I had told you the last time I was here that I was going to investigate why Ottawa South had such a big spike in numbers, and that is because of the way that we are documenting our move-ups. It happens to fall into this District One area, so every time we do a move-up, even though we may not actually be doing anything, it's still reflecting in that number. Did have a little bit of decrease in transfers, and I'll talk about that a bit more here on the next page. So, if you look by our response request, you can see that we had our inter-facility transport, it states that it was 186. However, if you refer to the previous page, it shows that we only took 169 transfers out of the hospital. And the reason for this is that now we are required, anytime that we have a call, either a request for mutual aid or a transfer, and we cannot immediately fulfill that request, we have to complete what's called a turn-down report. So, this is going to be reflective of those turn-down reports, which meant we had too many ambulances out, or we were at system status, we absolutely just could not fulfill that request for a transfer, and additionally, we were able to run a mutual aid transfer for another county. So, I just wanted you to be aware what the difference in those numbers were. Runs by unit disposition, in 78% of the cases, we're actually making contact with a patient. As you can see, our standbys, the majority of those are just to improve our coverage, but we did do some fire support, public safety support, and a mass gathering event. As far as evaluating and caring for our patients, the majority of the cases, 81% of the time, we would get to the patient, and we treated and cared and transported the patient. 17% of the time, the patient did not want us to evaluate them or provide treatment or transport for them, and we did have a few where they, they did allow us to evaluate them, but then refused our services after that. Three people had no care that were required for them, and then in six cases, all we were able to, all we needed to do was provide some type of support service. And then again, just our transport dispositions of everybody that we saw, of all of our calls overall, 60% resulted in a transport of a patient, and keep in mind, this is the broad picture of standbys and everything that we do as a whole. Our average mile summary, you can see that the maximum miles to the scene did go up just a little bit in 2025, as did the average mileage to get to the scene of the call. And then our runs by destination name, this list seems to keep growing and growing every time I look at it, because we're going to more and more different facilities. And while everything was overall down because our patient transports were down, we did transport more people to Overland Park Regional, Lawrence Memorial, Advent Health Shawnee Mission, and Advent Health Overland Park. In looking at our average runtime summary, the biggest thing that I look at is the average at scene to left scene, so this means how long, if somebody calls 911, we're actually in their home with them before we get them in the ambulance and start transport. You can see in '24, that number was over 20 minutes, and we like to keep that number below 20 minutes, so the crews have done a really nice job of bringing that number down, and in that first quarter, you can see that we were down to just right at 19 minutes on scene. Our runs by service level, this is another one that had a bit of a change with it. Prior, in 2024, the only way I could get this report was based off of billing, so that may be that we had an EMT in the back of the truck with a patient. However, we either performed an ALS assessment on the patient, or maybe we had an ALS provider that did an EKG, found it to be normal, and the EMT was still able to tech the call. However, I couldn't get that to reflect in reports, it would only reflect by how we were billing it. That has now been corrected, and in 2025, this is an accurate record of who was in the back of the truck with the patient. So, very happy to get that out there to you. Our overlapping calls, really, there was only a difference in six in the number of move-ups that we did from 2024 to 2025, and overall, the times that status zero were down. And if you look at the system status, just the time we spent, we spent 0.35% of the time in 2024 in system status, and 0.24% of the time in system status in 2025. And that is all that I have, but I am happy to answer questions.
In an ambulance call, does it, is the pricing different, whether you have a paramedic or an EMT?
It is, yes, we have, there are several different pricing structures, all the way from just a basic life support ambulance to something that we would call a specialty care transport, and with those, generally, it's a transfer from the hospital, where the patient is requiring such intensive help that we can't provide it on our own, and we would have to take a nurse with us, or respiratory therapist, or somebody with special, with expertise in what's happening with the patient. Typically, they come out with about eight or nine different medications hanging, and they're quite sick, but yes, the pricing structure does range all the way from basic life support to that very special care transport.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We do need a motion, right?
Oh, yes, thank you, Derek.
I was thinking there was one, I have all these papers up. I'll make a motion, trying to find my motion, to approve the adjustment report, first quarter 2025, and the collections report, first quarter 2025.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes. Next item, five, is to discuss and consider approval of purchase of three patrol vehicles with equipment.
Good morning, Commissioners. To get started, I would say, I know that there is some frustration with how this process went, I share that, and I accept responsibility for the, for some miscommunication that we had in our office. I've communicated that with Derek, and just so you know, we may not always get it right the first time, but we always accept responsibility and be upfront and honest about, about what we have going on. This is to, to replace, to get three rotation vehicles. For us, we, we will not be replacing three vehicles, this is replacing two, and even though we're getting three in, last year, we added SRO at West Franklin, and like we did when we added the SRO at Central Heights, the county contribution was the vehicle and the equipment, the school district pays for all the salary and benefits for that person, and then we do provide the vehicle for them. We don't buy another one, this is just, we don't rotate one out, and the benefit that we, that the county has is that when they are not in school, summers or any breaks, then they are working patrol functions as well, so, so that, I think it's a good deal for the county, and seems to be working well for the school districts as well. During this last budget year, we budgeted, there was $200,000 budgeted in the capital outlay fund for the purchase of the vehicles. The amount that we have that was from SERV is 2,000, 210,416,21 for the vehicles, and then also, as we have discussed, we have to replace the mobile radios to be compliant with the, with the new FBI standards, communication standards for encryption, so that is an additional 10,233, bringing the total to 220,649,21. As we've discussed with Derek, between the, a funds transfer from a non-tax fund and the proceeds that we will, that we will receive from the auction of those two vehicles we're replacing, we will be under the 200,000 that was allotted, so. That's all I have on this, unless you guys have questions.
So, to be clear, Jeff has indicated that he is gonna contribute $18,000 from one of his non-tax funds, so that would bring, that there would bring the total out of capital outlay down into the 202 range, and then the vehicles he's gonna sell, we believe, will yield more than $2,000. Just for your perspective, we budget 370,000 in capital outlay, and thus far this year, we've only used 8,500 out of that, so we still have over 360 in there. From a financial perspective, this, you know, this is something that the county can do.
That's the general fund capital outlay, so that's for capital needs in the entire county, though, so yeah.
Correct. I will let you know, the two vehicles that we're replacing, one is a 2018 Explorer. It, it has about 109,000 miles, which is not bad, but it's had some, it has some issues, so it's been pulled out of service. The repairs on that are gonna cost more than we believe we would be able to get out of, than it would be worth for us to fix. The other one is a 2019 Explorer that has 147,000, and it is, once they get to that mileage, they start, those are the ones that start costing us more money. The other thing that ends up costing us a little bit on a, on some of this is when we have mixed vehicles in our fleet, so it is, it's better for us to have the same type of vehicles, and so the Explorers are, they're starting to break down, and so we are replacing those with the Durangoes. And also, I might mention, Derek and I have discussed the process, doing a different process for this, moving, moving forward, so we will not have some of the same issues that we experienced this year, so.
The motion says the dollar amount from SERV, but it'd be from SERV and Motorola, right?
Yeah. Oh, yes, yes.
So, hear motion?
Yeah. I, down there, make a motion to approve the purchase of three replacement patrol vehicles with ballistic panels from SERV and Motorola, totaling an amount of 202,694.21 from the capital fund, and 18,000 from Sheriff's Non-Tax Fund.
Would it be 49 or 90?
Yeah, 49.
49.
All right, I'll second.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, consider the approval of the county surveyor agreement with Tim Sloan.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, on June 6th, we received notification that Jim Schmitz was going to retire from being our county survey reviewer. However, he had already done the legwork for us and found an individual that would be able to take his place, who is fully qualified. This is a niche situation where there's not a lot of folks around that do this type of work, because you already have, you have to typically find a retired surveyor that has decided to continue keeping their certificates. In this case, he's found Tim Sloan from Manhattan, who operates a pretty large established business. He has already looked at the contract and agreed to the terms, which I would say the best way to represent this is, we're getting pre-COVID prices on this, so. So he's, he's agreed to the same terms and conditions as far as payment as Jim did in 2015. So it's kind of, it's a perfect transition for us, that we, we see it as an easy, easy transition. Jim has already stopped taking in surveys, so this is kind of time essential. And so we didn't have real time to put it out for bid and whatnot.
Jim did this for multiple counties in the area, right?
Yeah, we're not the only one that's transitioning over to this Tim Sloan. I believe Anderson and Lynn County will also be doing the same, unless they've got their own individuals, but I'm assuming they're following suit.
Well, this is typical for how professional services are procured in government. Generally, you look at the, first, their qualifications, the service they offer, and then you see if you can negotiate a fair price. And if that's what we were paying 10 years ago, it's quite likely fair, it's apples to apples, so.
As I told Derek, I think he's doing it for the love of the game, not for the money. His corporation could charge exponentially more if they wanted to. And I don't know that we'd have any other alternatives.
I'll make a motion to enter into agreement to designate Tim Sloan as the official land surveyor for Franklin County, Kansas, for the purposes of reviewing plats of survey and subdivision plats pursuant to the Kansas statute. Through the other.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes. Item seven, consider approval of rezoning application 2503-0038, Harris.
Okay, this is commonly known as 2050, Old Highway 50, roughly one and a half miles southwest of Ottawa. The applicant is requesting to rezone three acres to the R3A district and five acres to the RE district. We currently have a letter from Rule Water 4, as they will provide water meters. We also have a letter on file from Water Systems Engineering, that the soils on the three-acre lot will be the quality enough for a traditional in-ground system, septic system. There's no significant discussion, as the small lots fit in the area that have, that have already been densely populated along Highway 50. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of this recommend, of this rezoning. Mr. Harris, you're most likely in need to abstain from this.
Yes, sir. Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of the Harris application. Do I need to read the whole thing?
Uh, no, you're fine.
Second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Consider approval of number eight, consider approval application of Roddell, Michelle Smith.
Yes, this is, as we did with the pain application, this is another application for a septic system to be repaired. We have been on site. It is in need of full repairs, probably replacement. We're going to treat it just like we did the previous one. We do know we have monies allocated outside of the full funds for the pains, but we do see this as a system that we can afford now and afford with, excuse me, with. Brian and I will just produce the, we're going to start with the soil analysis, and then we'll move forward to find out exactly what is required for the system in completion. And the Smiths do qualify for the full 100%.
I make a motion to approve the application, the residence at 1293 Rock Creek Road, to use, the Smiths to use the LEP program grant money to repair the failed septic system.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes. Number nine, consider approval application, Katie Reimer, 991 Missouri Road.
As the previous application, this is pretty much the same thing. In this case, the Reimers do only, are only going to be able to get 85% funding. They do not quite qualify for the 100%. And then after this application, I would expect this program to slow down, as we're going to try and get through these prior to accepting any more applications, till we can know exactly where our funding will stand after that.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Katie Reimer at 991 Missouri Road, to use the local environmental protection program grant money to repair their failed individual septic system located on site.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes. Ten discussions, consider approval of disaster declarations, June 3.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
What you have before you is a disaster declaration. Gone with all the cities and talked with the county about what actual damages that we occurred, what was going on. The county's got, well, we have 47, about 47,000. We've got about $47,000 wrapped up in flood fight from that June 3 event. Talking with the city of Ottawa, they're going to be, they're going to be plus 60, they're going to be 65, 70,000. And Wellsville's got, you know, five or $6,000. So this is per, the first step of public assistance, is that we have to go through and do this disaster declaration. We'll send that to the state, because if we meet our threshold of $122,000, then the state needs to meet their threshold of 5.5 million of public non-ensured damage, which I think they're going to get with El Dorado being flooded out, and Council Grove, and some of those other places that they had to go. So this is that first step to be able to see if we can get that, that public assistance money back. This would be a, if we get that, if we get that presidential disaster declaration, we can get reimbursed 75% of what we've already put out, so.
We need to read the declaration?
No, I think you would just approve it, approve the declaration and proclamation, and you'll be good to go.
I'll make a motion to approve the disaster declaration and proclamation for the June 3 storms and flooding.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes. Staff reports.
I don't believe I have anything for you today, Rod, thanks.
Pat? Tom, you got any more?
No, I think that was it.
I've been updating you as how many inmates we have farmed out. As of this morning, we have 12, so our numbers, that number is coming down some. Hopefully, we can sustain that, and they actually get, keep, keep going in that direction. So that's kind of where we are. Also, I had shared, I think, with, with the board, but I know with the administrator, that there were some FCC regulations that were, that were going to be imposed, that were going to restrict a lot of the facilities, could no longer get a commission off of phone calls and video visitations from, from inmates. We met with our company yesterday. We're coming up close to time to renew our contract. So we did meet with them yesterday. The commissions for the phone and the video stuff is at zero. We will get no commissions there, but we will be getting, our percentages went up a little bit on a couple other areas. So we just, we anticipate, based on their figures, that we will probably, that our commission checks will probably reduce by about $900 a month, is where we're at on that. So those go into the jail trust, and the jail trust is used for anything that's for the safety and welfare of the inmates and the security of the facility. So there'll, there'll still be money coming in there, because with this company, they don't just do our phone service, they do several other things. So there still will be some commissions coming in, and then we have some other, other revenues streams where we get stuff in there as well. So I don't think it's, it's not going to be near as bad as what we initially were, were expecting to kind of brace for as, as this started. The last thing I have is that, as you know, we, there was a couple, I don't know if they were really protest, but demonstrations that happened in, in Ottawa this last weekend. And we had several of us that were part of the planning for that. It was our office, the Police Department, Emergency Management, and Emergency Medical Services were also involved, all in the, in the planning, and then in the, the response to that. Things went pretty well. Both events, we coordinated well with the organizers of those, and we did not anticipate any problems with those, with those groups, and we didn't really, there really wasn't any issue with any of them. Our concern was going to be the spectators and people coming from the outside that may be agitators, and those were minor, and they were handled right away. So we have reached out to the, to the organizer of the Note Kings part, which they had, they had a pretty good group there, just to get their feedback on how they, what they're, what they perceived from our, from our response, how, how we planned and how we handled things. And they have met, and as their group, to kind of discuss that, and they will. I've been assured that they will be getting back with this here in the next couple days to, to let us know what they thought. But they've, so far, everybody, things have been positive, and they were appreciative. And that's, that's really about it. Nobody, we had no, nobody get hurt, and so, and there was no property damage, so those are, those are good things. We didn't expect to see people acting here in Franklin County like we see in LA County and some other places, but we, we have to be, be prepared just in, just in case, so.
With the gesture of reaching out to them to ask if, you know?
Yeah.
If it's appreciated, and hopefully keeps that good relationship between you and them, or your organization and them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Christie? Esther? Jeffrey?
Just briefly, I wanted to let you know that they are, Caterpillar is out at the transfer station today, weather permitting, and pulling the motor out of that compactor. So we should, they're going to leave it on site, take the motor with them, determine whether or not it's actually rebuildable or just replaceable. But I want to thank them again for what they're doing for us, and, and we should have that up and going again for Peg here before too long. That's all I've got.
Jeff, when does gavel roads, when are our trucks being?
The 24th, so next week. And I believe, I looked this morning, and I think all of them are running about, it's hard to tell early, but I think they've all up in the 2000s or, so we're at about 15,000 so far we made on those six trucks, approximately. But I hope we do a whole lot better than that.
They always go up the last
Last day.
Five minutes.
So once we obviously have that amount, I mean, Jeff, Janet, and I will have a conversation, but from there, we can discuss other potential uses if, if we feel it's responsible to do that, so.
That's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Harris?
I just attended here last week, the new veterinary clinic out here. You know, I think it's, well, a nice place, very nice, and tons of room in there. And of course, I'd been out there when Reese was in there, and only three or four people working in there, like it seemed like it goes down to them, but I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to, to the community.
Well, I, because Ian's not here. I guess first off, a couple weeks ago, I went to the Rotary's event about fentanyl, and that was very informational. And if there's another presentation like that, I highly recommend everyone go. I afterwards gave my kids the, I'm a mom, and so I'm going to have to tell you talk about this, even my kid who doesn't even live at home anymore, was like, I'm going to call you. But one of the statistics that stood out to me was that Kansas is the state with the highest fentanyl deaths for those ages 15 to 19 years out of the whole US. I thought that was, that's what stood out the most, and thought it was kind of shocking. So also, last Thursday, I went to the Chamber after hours at prime time, and they have a new menu, and we got to sample some of their appetizers, and they were very good. And the menu looks intriguing as well, especially if you like meat. And yesterday, the Amigos in Pomona had a Chamber coffee, and so that was neat to see, no, not living, or living just outside of Pomona. It's nice to have a couple of choices to choose from when you don't want to cook dinner. So we're excited. And I think that's all for me.
I have nothing. I'm entertained. George?
Thank you.
Hi.